July 1 meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectment toward a time being 6:04. Is there anyone recording the meeting?
Yes, I am Gary Mendez.
Free Cam.
I am also, but I don't believe I might come required by law to indicate who I am, even though you're an adult.
All right, I'm not going to deal with that, Mike. All right. So the first item on the agenda is the discussion of the feasibility study for the Asana Sewer Project. And he's Ryan.
Ryan's here. Thanks, everybody. How you doing?
Good.
See you, Lisa.
Hi, Ryan.
I just want to thank everyone again for letting us work with you on this study. I brought with me our team who's going to do most of the presentation tonight, and that's Helen Gordon. She's a senior program manager with us, who has a number of years of experience in the wastewater industry and also Andrew Gordo as well. And they worked more tirelessly over the last three, four months to get this study completed for you. So we'll take you-
Excuse me, Mike, could you keep from commenting so we can hear?
Sure.
Come on, Mike.
Excuse me, I'm on leave.
Go ahead.
So we'll take you through the background, a little basis of the data that we analyzed for this, and then go through some of the options and sub-areas that we've come up with. And then finally, talk about the cost estimate for the limited build-out option which you requested, and then the full build-out option. Okay. So the overall presentation, just talk about the overview and the background, what the sewer needs are for the Asana area, what the needs are from all the border health records we've also looked at, and what potential development may have impacts on. All the design considerations based upon topography and documented groundwater tables. Talk about costs and also funding opportunities that you can explore. We'll go over some of the permitting and legal aspects of taking on a project of this magnitude would be like. Talk about the projected schedule, obviously depending if you had a money tree outside they could use, of what the earliest you could do with this magnitude of a project as far as the permitting and funding window goes. And then just talk about some conclusions, recommendations on how to proceed. So as you know, obviously you know what your population is, but generally in this area of town in Asana, me personally have been involved in a lot of their reviews for ZBA conservation and planning over the last, it's been over 10 years now. As you know, you've seen a huge influx of development along this quarter and have redone a lot of the zoning bylaws in more than 50 districts in the recent past to help fuel some growth in this area. So the majority of the people in this area, most of them are really off of their own septic systems. And some of the existing sewer comes up and serves the stop and shop pump station, which then goes to Fall River. So we'll give you a little background about the existing system you have currently and what the projected system will look like, and then how far the extent of where the sewer expansion would be. And I'll talk about the existing system, and we'll pass it on to Helen.
So to start the analysis, what we did was look at, this is the project area that we're looking at, and we assess the needs based on flows, which I'll get into in a minute. In terms of the existing system, so just to orient you, this is the town hall here. We've got Route 24 interchange here. This is the existing pump station. We called it pump station number two for our study purposes. And this is the stop and shop area that it services right now. And the future development that's being looked at on the riverfront would also be flowing into this pump station number two. In terms of existing sewer that is in place, we have an eight-inch sewer in this area. It's actually a force main that you installed. It's inactive right now, and you installed it with the future, in mind for future development along the area. And from the existing pump station, we have two force mains, an eight-inch and a four. The four inches is what is used currently from the pump station. The eight inches inactive. And that flows into the city of Fall River. Collection system ultimately goes to the Fall River wastewater treatment plant. So that's the existing system right now. The first step in our needs assessment was to look at the demand in the area, and the condition of this existing septic system. So there's approximately, in the study area, 62 existing septic systems. Over the last seven years, there's been approximately 17 that have had failures due to different reasons. And the driver for this particular project is really looking at the Asana area, excuse me, to look at the Asana riverfront area. Right now, that area also is impacted as far as flooding goes and the 100-year flood. In addition, it also is tributary to the Taunton watershed, which has a TMDL right now to reduce the nutrient levels to the Taunton River. So a project such as yours would look at, would be not only a development project to provide sewer service for, sewer service for this, the study area, but also it has an environmental impact in a positive way, which is something to consider. We looked at the flows based on full build-out. So these flows that are shown here are for full build-out, and then we looked at alternatives as you had requested for limited build-out and full build-out. So in order for us to design a treatment facility, we have to come up with flows. We estimate them based on Title V requirements, which are the guidelines by Mass DEP. So for the 188 developed parcels that you have in the study area and the 11 undeveloped parcels, we have an estimated average daily flow of 27 gallons a minute. And we've added standard peaking factors based on what we've seen associated with your water use in these areas, and also standards for design purposes, and come up with max and peak hourly flows. And these are the two flows that we use in order to size the facilities that we're looking at. So we have various facilities, whether it's force main, gravity sewer, or pumps. Once we had the flow assessment put together and the estimated flows, we also added the estimated flows for riverfront area. We do have to take that into consideration. Even though it's flowing into that existing pump station number two, depending on the alternates we looked at, which Andrew's going to get into the details about the various alternates we looked at, we have to take into consideration their flow. We came up with an estimate based on what the MEAP application was. Environment Partners also did a review for the planning board on riverfront, so we did have detailed information on what they're planning from a development perspective. So we were able to access that information. And we came up with an estimated peak hourly rate of 222 gallons a minute. So that would impact some of what's going on at pump station number two. And again, pump station number two is a privately owned and operated pump station. The community does not own that right now. So that's just additive in terms of flow to that particular area. Pump station number two right now only services the stop and shop area. It's operated by Keystone Partners for stop and shop, and there is a small development that also flows to this pump station. It's a small pump station. Right now, it utilizes the existing four-inch force main that comes out of it based on the flow. There is an eight-inch that would allow for larger flows, which would potentially need to be utilized if the riverfront area is actually developed as planned. And the wastewater, as I said before, goes to Fall River sewer collection system and ultimately treated. Again, the pump station as it stands is not sized to add the riverfront park, so for that development, they're going to have to expand that pump station, add bigger pumps, and then determine whether or not they need to start utilizing the eight-inch versus the four. And we did take that all into consideration when we were doing our analysis. So other design considerations we looked at was really, you know, the feasibility from a cost perspective, and that drove some of our alternative decisions that we made and that we're going to be discussing. We considered both what we call non-pressurized and pressurized alternatives. Depending on the topography in some areas, we really have to look at low-pressure sewers in order to get it beyond some topographical challenges we have in this particular area, and then also gravity. So we'll talk about that a little bit, and Andrew will speak to that in a minute. And then there's the preferences on how you're going to convey this new flow to Fall River. There's an alternate where you can flow into your, into a new pump station and pump directly through the, adding gravity and doing some slip lining of that eight-inch and not going right by pump station number two. And there's another alternate that we look at, which includes pump station number two into the dynamics of it, and that will be a decision that needs to be made. And we also, the drivers were also the environmental and topographical. So there's a low area, there's a high area, and then from an environmental perspective, we do have some wetlands, we do have some small river crossings that we have to look at in terms of the design. So those are the things that Andrew's going to speak to. You ready?
Thank you, Helen. So as Helen indicated, you know, we looked at the main focus area, which was beyond this Route 24 exchange looking north towards the town hall. What this map shows here is a conceptual overview of what the full build-out would look like in your system. Subarea one, which is detailed here in the maroon, indicates the low-pressure sewer system that Helen referred to. The reason for a low-pressure system in this particular case, your intersection here where South Main meets the aptly named High Street is your topographical high point. So in order to convey wastewater down beyond High Street, you need to pump up to this particular point. So anything north of this intersection here, anything in the red is all a low-pressure sewer system. Subarea number two, which is in the green, that indicates the gravity sewer system. So that's your traditional gravity-fed services and piping that flows to a common pump station. And then this pump station would then pump into subarea three, which is a combination of three various force main segments. We had looked at different sizes and different methods of installation as part of the approach, which I'll get into in a minute. But you can see, we broke up the segments into three particular segments, which ultimately discharges into the terminus manhole next to the city of Fall River intersection or the, at the town line. So this is the limited build-out figure that we put together. Really, the only difference here is, at the town's request, we focused mainly on routing the trunk line or the main sewer line along South Main Street. So as you can see, there's no side streets included as part of this limited build-out scenario. So the biggest changes would be in your subarea one and your subarea two. The main trunk line would only be built on South Main Street with stubs in the road for future connection. Segment number three would remain unchanged. They'd be the same regardless of what build-out scenario selected. So getting into some of the specifics, subarea number one, this services, as I said, all the properties north of the South Main-High Street intersection. It's approximately 130 properties, and it consists of prepackaged grinder systems that tie into low-pressure sewer piping. We did a cost comparison based on what it would cost for the full build-out with all the side streets and services connected versus limited build-out, which is the difference here in the cost. And as I noted in this last bullet, the preliminary costs do not account for the future, the costs from subareas two and three, which I'll get to in a minute. So this, the total price will be reflective of the costs from subarea one, two, and three, which I'll get to right now. Subarea number two, as I mentioned, is a gravity-fed sewer system. It services the intersection south of High Street down to the topographical low point, which in this case ended up being 23 Alexandria Drive. It's a vacant parcel right next to the Route 24 exchange located in a business development zone. So it makes its, it lends itself quite nicely for a future expansion as a pump station. This area was actually looked at several years ago when Boston Beer Company was first looking at expanding in this particular area. So this approach would involve the utility easement or purchasing of a vacant lot in this particular area here. And as I said, just in subarea number one, we broke out the cost based on the full build-out, which includes all of the side streets in this area, versus the limited build-out, which is your main trunk line. And again, the preliminary costs, it's accounting for just the cost in the subarea two. You also have to account for one and three as well in your total price.
Wouldn't that, Helen, then, drive the gravity coming down to it?
That would be gravity coming down to it, that's correct.
All right. Steven, oh, Steven, sorry, but we're just going to have the presentation, and please don't interrupt him. We'll have plenty of time before anything is considered for all kinds of questions. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. So as I said, the final area is the subarea three, which consists of a new sewer pump station and a new force main along South Main Street. The new pump station would consist of a below-grade wet well with two submersible pumps, a separate valve vault and meter chamber, a new electrical enclosure for the pump controls, and presumably a standby generator for the new facility. And this station, as Helen mentioned, is designed to handle a peak flow from your sewer shed area, which consists of nearly 200 properties. And as Helen mentioned, we looked at that based on average flow records for water usage as well as Title V records. And I'm going to get into some of the force main options and scenarios in this next slide. So as I mentioned, we had separated the subarea three into three particular segments. And the reason why we did this is because there's a number of different sizes and pipe installation methods that we considered. This first segment, which you can see here in the blue, it's a small segment that runs under Route 24. It's a 2,400 linear feet from our new pump station to where we'd be tying into for slip lining. This is the segment of pipe, this eight-inch pipe that's existing in the road that Helen had alluded to earlier. It's an inactive section of pipe installed 10 years ago, presumably for this purpose, to expand sewer service along South Main. So we would be cutting into the road and connecting right into this point. Then the second segment, this 5,500 feet of pipe, that would be slip lined due to the pipe already being in the road. And then finally, this part in the magenta here, this is the third segment of the force main, which is your 2,700 feet from the manhole five to the terminus manhole near the Fall River border. As I said, we looked at a number of different methods of installation and really focused on three things as far as pipe sizing goes. Velocities to maintain an adequate velocity in the line, head losses to minimize losses and ultimately reduce the size of the pumps, and three, the pressures within the lines so that way they're not in exceedance of what reported values would be for the pipe. So we did a desktop analysis based on the flows that we had estimated. The first and second segments, we had considered, they were pretty straightforward in terms of the sizing. The first segment would be 2,400 feet of four-inch pipe. And as I said, the method of installation, we could either go open cut or horizontal directional drilling, really based on future subwork with borings and groundwater that, you know, presumably would be included as part of a final design package. And then the second segment, we would focus on slip lining within that eight-inch pipe in the road. Really, no need to tear up the road. You already have the pipe in place. It really makes sense from a cost perspective to slip line that segment. But where the interesting part came in was this last segment, this third one, where we looked at a number of different options, really considering either reusing the existing force mains in the road or slip lining a new force main. We had considered connecting to the existing pump station, reduce our overall pump size, but ultimately, I know the town's preference was to keep the system separate. So that was our primary focus in the report. And ultimately, no matter what we did, we had to consider the riverfront flows. It's certainly a large amount of flow being discharged into the town sewer system, so it was something we had to consider in terms of our alternatives. So this is just an overview of the flows and the results from looking at each of the four, the six segments. I won't get into every particular detail here, but essentially what we had looked at in these options were reusing the piping that was in the road. So under option one, all flows would be tied into the active four-inch force main currently in place. The problem with that is your losses are pretty high in terms of your head losses, and thus it's not practical from an economic perspective to size a pump to meet that condition. So really, it was a no-build alternative. The second option uses the four-inch force main, essentially tying our new force main into this active four-inch force main in the road and rerouting the other flows into the eight-inch force main. Options three, four, and five all consider slip lining approaches, where essentially we'd be utilizing the eight-inch pipe in the road, slip lining a new section of piping. And as you can see, the biggest difference is just the head losses. As we got our pipe bigger and as we reduced our flows through the pipe, we were able to minimize and reduce the overall size of the pumps, which not only drove the cost down, but also drove the energy down as well. And finally, as an option number six, we had looked at potentially tying the new pump station into pump station number two. The reason why we did this, it significantly drove the cost down since there won't be, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a need for slip lining. The intent with this option six would be rerouting all the flow into your existing eight-inch force main. So essentially, there'd be no need to slip line, there'd be no additional expenditure, but there would be connection from the new pump station into the existing. So really, from a cost perspective, we'd followed option five because I know that the town's preference was to keep the system separate. But option six did seem to present itself, you know, financially feasible in terms of reducing some of that price. So as I said, the full build-out versus the limited build-out did not affect the price for subsegment, subarea number three. The first two segments accounted for about $2.1 million, and this third segment with the option five, keeping the system separate, accounted for about $400,000 totaling $2.5 million for this scenario. So this is an overview of the comparison between the full build-out costs and the limited build-out costs. So as you can see, the $2.5 million is what we carry here. It's the same for both alternatives. And as you can see, the cost difference is significant between the two. In the full build-out scenario, you have all your side streets, your service connections, your grinder pumps. So that certainly drove that cost higher in the full build-out scenario. So in looking at this, we had looked at costs for each subarea. We had put a 20% overhead and profit, a contingency based on the nature of the preliminary design, a cost for bonds and insurance, and then also a cost for escalation of labor and materials. Presumably, the cost of labor and materials is always going up. You never know where things are shaken out. So we wanted to make sure to account for that in our cost estimate. So we also accounted for technical services, and then a cost for the pump station lot/easement procurement to actually fulfill and go ahead with that pump station, and then a cost for police details. So you're looking potentially full build-out, you know, with design services, permitting services, and the lot procurement, about $22 million for full build-out, and then about $12.3 million for the limited build-out, which again, is the main trunk line along South Main in this, in this service area. So we had looked at a couple of different potential funding options. One of them was the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, which I think you folks might be familiar with. It's an annual program that lends itself nicely to shovel-ready or construction-ready projects. There's no particular minimum or maximum limit. However, design and engineering services would be capped at 10%. So this sort of program, they work with towns and communities to build a number of different projects, including sewer and utility extensions. So certainly, this is right up, this is right up the alley in terms of what this project is trying to accomplish. And as I said, the project, it's the annual application. Typically, the applications are due between July and August, so presumably, you could get, you could submit an application as early as this year. Funding tends to be more, you tend to have better luck with funding in terms of jobs that are more shovel-ready, but certainly, you can try for the funding for as early as this year. And then finally, the other option would be the Clean Water SRF program. It's a program financed through Mass DEP. It's a low-cost program that essentially lends affordable subsidized loans to towns and cities in the Commonwealth. It's applicable for bidding, construction, and CA services. And every year, they're always accepting project evaluation forms. Essentially, you get put on the list for funding, and then you'd apply for this construction stage loan application the following year. So in this scenario, a form could be submitted as early as this August, and then funding for construction could happen the following fiscal year. So as Helen alluded to already, there was a number of permitting and legal considerations we had to take into account as far as the project. One being the addenda to the agreement with the city of Fall River. Currently, the town has it allotted limit in terms of what it can send to the Fall River for wastewater treatment. So regardless of whether or not this sewer expansion project moves forward or the riverfront project moves forward, an addenda would be needed just based on exceeding the flow that's already established in the town's agreement. As I mentioned, the lot easement procurement, that would be needed for the facilitation of a new pump station. And we naturally chose that low point at 23 Alexandria Drive, not only due to its location, but just due to its, you know, ability. It's kind of at the low, you know, topographical point in the sewer, in the sewer shed, so it lent itself quite nicely for a pump station location. A notice of intent, that, this is based on some of the areas that Helen had alluded to, some of the stream crossings and the work within the Taunton River watershed. That would be subject to a notice of intent through the Conservation Commission. A state access permit would be required based on some of the work done in the DOT right-of-way along South Main Street. And then a MEPA review and ENF filing would be required just based on the length of sewer. In this particular case, the total length of pipe would be over five miles, which would trigger the MEPA requirement. And finally, as Helen mentioned before, portions of the new sewer system are within the 100-year flood plain, so there'd have to be level of protection considerations taken into account just based on the low-lying areas in the sewer shed. So what we had done here was just put together a preliminary schedule, assuming full steam ahead as far as preliminary design goes. We're confident, you know, if, assuming the project was to move forward, we'd be able to complete preliminary design by winter of 2020. This includes working with the town on the addenda and procurement of the new lot, funding applications, getting those in the works, wetlands, borings, survey, and base plan development, getting the preliminary and the design started, and then a design report that would finalize the basis of design. Final design would take place in 2020. This includes bidable construction documents, plans, specifications, and an updated cost estimate. And if all went well in terms of permitting and the approvals for funding, bidding could take place as early as fall of 2020, moving into winter 2021. And as I said, this is a preliminary schedule. We just wanted to give you guys something to think about in terms of scheduling, you know, in terms of what it would look like with the project moving full steam ahead. And looking forward into construction, the projects themselves, as I've kind of mentioned, they're separated into three specific phases. So in total, you're looking at about two years' worth of construction based on the phased approach. But certainly, these dates can be adjusted if work can, work happens simultaneously or depending on the way that you phase the project. In this particular case, we assumed a staged phasing going through the project. So as in conclusion, I think the biggest one, you know, amending the existing agreement regardless of whether or not sewer service is expanded into the South Main Street area, that riverfront development would trigger the addenda required with the city of Fall River. So that would just require the amendment to that particular document. Requesting the detailed sewer design from the riverfront developer would be helpful, not only in terms of understanding what their peak flows would be, but also understanding what the phasing of those flows would be. Certainly, they're not, from what we've read, it seems like that, you know, all the flows won't be heading into your system at one particular time. It'll be over a phased approach. So kind of understanding that schedule would help the town- would help the town from their own perspective in terms of sizing and, and getting the, this project moving forward. Completing a lot easement procurement, as I mentioned, in order to facilitate any sort of wastewater along South Main Street, there will be a pump station required. Securing this sooner rather than later to get a vacant lot or an easement purchase would facilitate and move that, that plant forward to getting a pump station installed. And then finally, making a decision as far as the preferred force main approach, whether the systems would be kept separate, the new pump station and the pump station number two, as Helen mentioned, or tying them together. You know, and as I said, I, I know there's a number of different options in terms of the force main, a lot, a lot of different ways to crack the, the nut, but there's certainly a lot of options for the town to consider as far as this project. So, that's all I had, is there any questions?
Right. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
I'll open it to the board.
Well, I don't have any questions for the planning. I have a lot of questions regarding financing.
Me also. But, uh, ju- just for the report, is there any, anyone has any questions?
So, um, can you go back to
Sure.
one of the slides? The railroad, um, the T station is supposed to go in along that too, have, did you take that into consideration as well?
For the, um, for the riverfront development?
Right across from the riverfront development?
Oh, this guy right here? Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't see any plans in the riverfront package that they had submitted as far as where this would be located. If there is a T crossing that does cross that South Main Street, that would have to be considered as well as far as the crossing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? I'm good. The big thing would be financing.
True.
And, uh, so, thank you for your report. I just want everyone to realize that this was a, a study to see if it was feasible and we'll, you know, we'll go from there.
Yes.
Yeah, just to clarify on the financing piece, so you have the Mass Works and the SRF. And realistically, the Mass Works would be a shovel-ready project. So, that would be something I think if, if you're considering it, looking at maybe submitting 2020. And then, from the SRF perspective, the state revolving loan fund project, the process would be, um, they, they have a rolling yearly project submission, and they require appropriation of funds after it's put on the intended use plan within a certain period of time. And a project like this would certainly be of interest under flow.
Um, the last slide you showed, um, you had construction and, um, not construction, you have planning and development, correct?
Uh, which, which slide was it?
I think it was one of the last ones that kind of broke out everything, so
The costs.
Preliminary, yeah, yes, rather. Um, preliminary design.
Right, so preliminary, so in terms of SRF, SRF funds, the construction piece, the resident project rep, the construction admin services, police details, that kind of piece. They don't, they expect the design to be submitted. The planning, so some of the planning work ahead of time could be submitted for a loan. The question is, depending on the cost breakout, whether or not you want to go through the process of getting a loan for that piece, and we could discuss that particular piece further. So, they fund planning, they don't fund the design, and then they fund the construction. And the reason they've started, they, they changed that probably around the, in the eighties because communities were spending their money and then not building the project. So, they kind of want the communities to have skin in the game. So, that's why SRF does it that way.
Okay, let me follow up to riverfront business, business park. Can they exist without a sewer system?
That's a good question. I know that we had, that our team looked at it. They will need to hook up to pump station number two, which is a private pump station, and they will have to, that's part of their plan. So, their plan is to have a sewer within their own development that's privately planned and designed. I believe right now they are looking at a pump station. We didn't get the goal, the details on that, that's why we highly recommend that the community ask for details on their design. At a minimum, they're going to have to pump to pump station number two. Pump station number two is going to have to be upgraded in order for them to get in. There's not enough capacity right now at that pump station. And then, they would flow to the City of Fall River. So, you not doing the project doesn't preclude them from connecting up. However, that will trigger your limit on your agreement with the City of Fall River, and you'll have to work on that addendum piece.
All right. Yep, that answer a question? Yes, um, did you consider all the businesses and potential businesses along South Main Street?
So, what we considered was we looked at all the currently developed land for the current use and any undeveloped land for what the potential use could be for that undeveloped piece of property.
Okay, but you didn't go up any side street? Okay, but you didn't go
Full buildup.
Okay, all right.
So, it's full buildup.
All right.
And then we, we ratcheted back for limited just along the corridor. So, we've looked back into that hole. So, basically, what we've done is, going in the wrong direction, right? Up is down and down is up. So, we looked at the whole study area here. So, we looked at, and the side streets.
Correct, anything north of that Route twenty-four interchange, that's what we had considered as part of our analysis for the sewer shed area.
So, from this part up here. So, this whole area. And then we looked at a limited and then the full buildup, so you have both there.
Do you know how much it costs to tie into a sewer line?
I'm going to tell you it depends, unfortunately. So, it depends on how far away.
What, like a private homeowner would have to pay?
No, um, no, a, a business. So, does it depend on the size of the business?
Depends, some, some towns build a betterment in and assign it, some build it into the connection fee, so it all depends upon the whole total project cost and how are you going to fund it? It's going to be general funds, debt exclusion, betterments, you know, that, that plays into it.
Okay, and would the betterment, would the betterment offset the cost of putting in a new sewer, a new septic system? Like, in the long run, I know several businesses along South Main Street have had to put in several septic systems.
Yes, one, one, and then ten years later, another one. And they could, whether or not they have an updated septic system, they might need an, what they call an IA system, an innovative alternative, which is a more robust septic system than the, the standard septic system to reduce nutrient loading. So, it would, they would basically be paying for the sewer versus a new septic system. And some of those septic systems can cost thirty to forty thousand dollars. And a sewer connection would end up in the long run being cheaper over a life cost analysis.
Okay, um, one last question, can you tell me about the environmental impacts that you were talking about?
Yes, so the environmental impacts, basically, septic systems are notorious for nitrogen loading into the environment. And so, particularly older septic systems aren't designed to reduce the, the amount of nutrients that come out of it, and particularly nitrogen. So, in areas particularly where there are some challenges of high nitrogen, there's a requirement for what they call total maximum daily loading on nitrogen. So, Taunton River, right, Taunton Watershed has a TMDL that's been approved by the state. So, they're looking to reduce as much of the nitrogen loading to that. And the USONET area does flow to that, tributary to it. So, that would, could potentially reduce it.
Sorry, but that, that would help you super highly on some of the grants.
I was going to say, does that help with the grant process?
Yes, it does, it helps in the process because you're improving the environmental piece, yes.
Are there any grants through Taunton Watershed, do you know?
Not that I know of.
Not as much as I know.
Okay.
Mass Works would be the place to get the grants, because and, and that's more associated with developing jobs and businesses. And the amount of work you have for the, the amount of zoning changes you've made to this whole area I think will go a long way to scoring highly, so you have a good chance of Mass Works. The Clean Water SRF for the, for the construction loan allows you
Is more on the environmental.
More environmental scoring, but that gives you a longer-term loan with a low interest. So, it may, in, in addition to what you may get on the market for a twenty-year bond, you may be able to get twenty-five, thirty years at two, three percent.
Right, so right now, right, so right now, SRF is at a two percent, and you can choose either a twenty or a thirty-year payback.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome, thank you for yours.
Thank you. All right, um, we'll move on to
Can we discuss financing?
George, I think we'll put that off for another question.
I guess one, just one quick question. That you did make a reference to Mass Works in that it would probably be a grant we'd be looking at not in this grant cycle versus the next grant cycle.
You could certainly submit it, their preference is really given to shovel-ready.
Yeah, I actually had a conversation today.
It, it depends on who, who else is submitting that year. You might just be in luck and nobody else has shovel-ready and your project goes higher. So, um, that's something to kind of balance out.
Yeah, I actually did have a discussion today with Juan Vega, who is the Mass Works Director and also the Assistant District Secretary, and he did stress about the project being shovel-ready. Although they have accepted projects that are twenty-five percent design, he didn't consider a preliminary study to be a twenty-five percent design. He did make mention of the ten percent that you could use toward, of grant funds used toward the project itself. But, uh, the thing I understood from it was that it, you have to leverage, they're looking for leverage with private investment in terms of how the sewer line would then impact, um, certain parcels and bring in jobs and bring in housing and, you know, provide affordable housing and that kind of thing. The thing he did stress was that, uh, the, it's an extremely competitive, and the round is opening now and will be open until August ninth. They get over a hundred applications, they fund thirty to forty, the cap is eighty million, it's a bond cap. So, the average grant is two million dollars. So, you know, with a twelve million and a twenty-two million dollar project, we would have to look at alternative funding sources. That would be the bond program that you had made mention. Or, I also spoke to Jeff Walker today from SERPAD, and he told me about an EDA program that the SERPAD has had a lot of success with, but it does require one-to-one financing. So, if you were to do that kind of thing, you'd have to put up six million if it's a twelve million, you'd have to put up eleven million if it's a twenty-two million. There's a concern about the MEPA potential in the project only because some of those parcels are running near the water and how, and, and the MEPA issue is, is significant in that, they want you to have a MEPA approval for the project almost before you even apply.
Before, you have to, that's correct, yes.
So, there are a whole bunch of things here that I don't think we can really accomplish in this, for this grant cycle. And it might be something in the future if the board decides to go down that route to, to take a look at it, you know, depending upon, I'm going to do it, I'm going to work at the direction of the board. If the board says to me that they want something done for this grant cycle, that's what I'll do. But I'm just letting you know specifically, there are other issues that would come into play here if we were to try to pursue the grant on this. And, and getting two million dollars is not going to give us what we need to make the project.
It's not going to get you moving forward, and I would, I would tend to agree with that.
Just to speak on your point a little bit, so Mass Works, like you said, stakeholder buy-in and involvement. If you can get promise or some letters from supporters, from developers or property owners along the route of what could happen if sewer was there, that goes a long way to them funding.
The, the other thing that I would recommend to the board would be, uh, we, once again, we do have forty hours of time that's available from SERPAD. And if we're not going to go forward with the application this year, and there's an interest by the board and then there's an interest by the townspeople to move forward with this project, then using those forty hours in the upcoming year to take a look at the demographics in the area in terms of the residential buildout and the nutrient impact, as well as looking at the business impact in terms of how many jobs we create, what types of, that's your private investment portion. So, we could use those forty hours basically to establish a rationale for the, then the twenty-twenty application to make the application more competitive. Because it, it is a shovel-ready program, they want you to
Yeah.
You know, they, they, they want you to start, it's going to be awarded October, November. They want to have all the design done by March, and they want the shovel in the ground coming April, May. So, I don't know, I think it's, for our purposes, it may be a little bit too aggressive.
Yeah, like I was saying before, you might want to bite off like that twenty-five percent level, get something so that by the time you get that grant, you'll have a lot more data behind you to present, start your permitting process, and then in that short timeframe they give you, you'll be able to go from the twenty-five percent to the, to the ninety, a hundred percent to get way above the bid to beat the grant.
So, it would be, essentially, it'd be, you know, a, a decision of the board, you know, how do we want to move forward from here, is this something the board is interested in doing? And, and how do we go about, um, you know, presenting that to the residents? And having the residents give us feedback regarding, you know, if it's a project they want to fund.
I think there's a lot of questions, personally, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be considered before we even vote whether we're going to move forward or not move forward. I mean, we just got this, it's time to take it all in, I'll tell you upfront, like twenty-two million is not going to ever happen. Like, that's just like
Twelve is kind of a
Yeah, so, I mean, um, that being said, I, you know, uh, we do have to look at the impact of, of what the, uh, not only riverfront business park can bring to the table for us, um, but negotiate something with them, but also the state, I mean, the state's funding, putting all this money into having the train station and, and, and a, a substation down there. Um, so we need to look at them for some, some help as well. So, I, I think we have a lot of things that we need to all consider before we go and say we're going to spend forty hours or forty million or four thousand dollars at this point, so.
And, and I would strongly suggest asking the, the riverfront developers for more details on their project. I mean, I think just in terms of understanding, you know, not only, like I said, not only the amount of flow that they're sending in, but also just the phasing of it, um, would just be beneficial for your perspective as far as renegotiating your agreement with the town.
And talk to the assessor and get an idea as well how much the tax value of the property would go up based upon sewer. Because that tax revenue also would offset any borrowing you have to do, we've seen that in other projects.
You want to do some kind of a cost analysis to show that the thing would pay for itself basically.
That's right.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would recommend that we consider putting a gender item on about a month or so.
Yeah, let's soak this on.
All right?
So, the, the agenda item will be to discuss financing?
Yeah, discuss if we're going to go forward.
I think the whole, the whole project.
The whole thing, you know.
If you need us again, just let us know, we can show up to you.
I just didn't want to create any false impressions that
Oh, I, I was
the Mass Works grant is the solution and it's going to be a simple process, and they're going to give us twelve million dollars, it's not going to happen.
I worked on that trying to get it for Boston Beer and it was, it's not easy.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
You may.
Okay, um, my understanding that you're prohibiting any public discussion during this meeting, even though it was published. Is that my, is that my
My, the, the item, the item on the top of the agenda of public discussion is the chairman's prerogative. Or, or the order, Mark, or the order of what we carry on in this agenda, okay? And this evening, we have much, too much to, uh, we, we're almost an hour into the meeting. I can see almost two more hours.
Can I make a comment? Not about, not about that.
No.
Well, I'm going to review the open meeting laws
Okay.
in the state of Massachusetts, and if this is a violation, I will file it. Okay, just, so it's fully noted and it's the secretary reports it.
But, but, I'm not, my, my issue is not to stymie discussion much, Mark.
I understand.
But, for this evening
You bring people in on an agenda and then deny them the
Okay, we're moving on, we're moving on, Mark, okay? Item number two, chapter nine, project requests for Highland Ridge Road, uh, Wood Lawn Road and Green Lawn Road. And we have a couple of requests, Mike, are you
I'm here for that.
Okay, okay, well, we'll give you the floor then.
Okay, you have all the paperwork, so I don't know what to talk about.
Yeah, you want me to just get, I can list what they are. Uh, we have one project, the Solicited Narrow Roads to Southeastfield Road, uh, East Hill Road, I'm sorry. For
Oh, okay, yeah.
Seventy-four thousand, four fifty-one. We have a second project, and that involves, um, paving, milling, and batch.
So, that was, um, that year freshman, I can kind of, uh, last fall, there was a drainage project on Oaklawn Road. Part of that project was to pave Oaklawn Road when it was done. So, the plan was to just bang out the rest of that Part of that project was to pave Oaklawn Road when it was done, so the plan was to just bang out the rest of that, it's like a four-street subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Highland Ridge, uh, Woodlawn and Green Lawn.
Mm-hmm.
So that's collectively what those three are meant to do.
Yeah.
And the Highland Ridge amount total is seventy-four thousand, four hundred, fifty-one dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, motion made, do I hear a second?
What is the motion for?
The motion is to, uh, approve the, um, funds, the, uh, chapter ninety funds for repaving, uh, Highland Ridge Road in the sum of.
Just Highland Ridge, we're talking.
Just Highland Ridge at this point.
You don't wanna take a vote on all of that till we discuss it all?
Oh, if you wanna, if we not got a second, then we'll go, we'll go and do that.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, then, um, I'll continue on with, um, uh, Woodlawn Road, the same thing, resurfacing, uh, chapter ninety funds in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-nine cents. And the Green Lawn Road, uh, same thing, chapter ninety funds, resurfacing in the sum of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
That's a quick question.
Yes.
Mike, you represent the highway department on this, or?
Right now, yes.
Okay.
Tonight.
And so the total, uh, of all sums is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, ninety-one dollars.
What's the sum, Charlie?
The, the total sum for all three streets is going to be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, ninety-one dollars.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, um, from, uh, mill, uh, milling and paving of Green Lawn, Highland Ridge, Highland and Oaklawn.
Same thing. Motion made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the next item is highway contracts for, uh, materials, um. And do we have all the contracts?
Yes, we do have all the contracts.
Okay, all right. The first is going to be, uh, G Lopes Construction for winter sand, for sanding the, the roads. Uh, Eastern Material, uh, Mineral Spine Meat for Highway Salt, uh, T J Edwards for, um, concrete at the plant. T J Keatings for, uh, cold planing and Betuna's Concrete and Plates, that would be, uh, actually the paving, I believe. Allstate's Asphalt, uh, Stone Seals, Single Double, twenty percent rubber and skimming. Uh, and the last is for, uh, Seal Coating Ink for Crack Seal. Basically, these are the, uh, contracts for, uh, the materials that they're going to use over this fiscal year, uh, on the highway department.
Question.
Yes.
Why is the highway superintendent not here to answer questions about these, these items?
You'll have to ask the highway surveyor that, okay?
Oh, don't we?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made, do I hear a second? I think, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, for, uh, G Lopes, uh, which.
Can you have the highway superintendent at the next meeting so I can ask the questions, like, am I asked?
The highway supervisor is a grown man, he controls himself.
He's town official.
Mark, no more, no more.
He's a town official.
Mark, no more.
Why are we being stonewalled, Mr. Sullivan?
We're not being stonewalled.
Yeah, apparently it seems as if.
No, no, Mark, if, if you, if you, if you can't control yourself, I'm gonna have to call you, I'm gonna have to call you out of order.
I'm controlling myself, fine, it is, if you can't control yourself, sir.
Um, the next contract is an incentive for, um, the maintaining of, um, oh, uh, uniforms. Um, this has to do with the, uh, contract with the, uh, highway department, uh, employees, highway department employees, um, as such, uh, part of the contract. And the bits would be to approve the contract. Do I hear a, uh, motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a, okay, George, did you wanna come up to that?
I can motion accept.
Okay, motion made, seconded, motion made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
Second.
It's the amount of six thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents.
Did we hear that?
Yes.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we skipping the first two contracts?
Yeah, I saw that, uh.
Fine, maybe I.
All right, you skipped the highway contracts, I see.
Fine, maybe I was.
It's just a new format, okay?
I know, I know.
Let's get used to it.
Okay, um, I guess I have the whole contract, okay, um. All right. Do I have a motion on the, the, uh? So you're, you're saying we didn't, uh, I skipped over and didn't approve?
Uh, you a- awarded the pitch, now you have to approve the contracts.
Okay. Okay, all right, so.
I'll make a motion to award the contracts.
All right.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Doing all right here now, Mike? Okay. Now. The next is with, uh, oh, relation to the, uh.
Civic ready.
Yes, civic, yeah, I can find it. Would be for the, let me get back here. Now, okay, would be, uh, the civic ready, uh, citizens notification system, uh, which is the notification, uh, system that we have to alert people to meetings and other, uh, related.
We're making the transition from the current system that we have, which is a, a, uh, unit-based system, uh, which actually is going to cost, it was, fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand five hundred.
This year, to civic ready, which is a subsidiary of the company that, uh, is our website company. And, uh, under this proposal, uh, in the amount of five thousand, eighty-three dollars, we are allowed unlimited, uh, messages where previously we had been limited to a set number. We did request a bit from One Call, uh, on their unlimited service and they said it would be over fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, so it does make this proposal attractive. It also includes, uh, a multiple of options in terms of noticing, uh, we can use, uh, you can send texts, you can do, uh, use a phone, as well as the web. Uh, there is an independent app, uh, that One Call didn't have, so if a resident, uh, downloads the app, they're able to get the, the notices o- over the app. And finally, we have the ability to geo-target, so if we wanna send a notice out to a specific group or a sp- specific, uh, part of town, we're able to do that. So it would be my recommendation that we, uh, make the move to civic ready in the amount of five thousand, eighty-three dollars. We'll make a motion to approve, but, uh, can we, for our next meeting, put on the agenda to discuss, uh, resident notifications again?
Um, sure, we can, we can look into that, yes. Um.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the, uh, civic ready, uh, contract, uh, in this, um, stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the last contract is Woodard in Current, uh, Environmental Services for the, uh, Howling Road Landfill. This is the monitoring that we have to do at the landfill. It's an annual, uh, contract.
Yeah, it's a standard contract that we approve every year, uh, which provides environmental monitoring as well inspectional, as well as inspectional services, in the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred dollars.
Standard contract.
Motion to accept.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next item, item number five, is the ambulance abatements for the, uh, oh, uh, month of May.
Motion approved?
Motion made to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and, uh, seconded, any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Uh, amend them to the agreement between the Town and Free Town and Public Employees Union Local, eleven forty-four, Luna, Clarico Library Union. Um, this is the, um, amendment, uh, to the agreement, which would allow for a bachelor's degree to be the level of a, uh, senior librarian.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next seven is transfer requests.
Uh, the finance committee is here also.
Sure. Okay, Gary, all right, uh, the first transfer request is in the sum of two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents, um, from the library, uh, budget. For, uh, uh, yes, for overtime because of, uh, the lack of, uh, staffing. All right, uh, um, that.
Can we just go through all of them, put a hold on anything, and just take one word?
Um, Gary, how do you wanna, um, do you have a problem with that?
Yeah, no, I don't.
Okay, I will continue then. Uh, the next is for, uh, eleven hundred and forty-five dollars, uh, to be transferred from the pot-time dispatcher wages account, uh, to the, and it, I think it repairs.
And maintenance.
And maintenance of equipment account. The next is aga- again from the communications department, uh, the number, the sum of seventy-eight hundred, fifty dollars, uh, from pot-time dispatcher wages to the, uh, overtime account. The next one is the sum of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars to be transferred from the reserve officer's wages to repair and maintenance of vehicles account.
Work department's there?
Uh, police.
Police.
Thirteen, five. The next is.
What was it going to?
Uh, it's going to the repair and maintenance of vehicles account. Uh, the next is from the police department, the sum of eight thousand dollars to be transferred, um, to the, uh, gross overtime court. Department, to be transferred from gross overtime court to repair and maintenance radios account. And then there is a request for a transfer from the reserve, uh, fund, why don't we do the, uh, transfers within, so, uh, hearing those, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to accept.
Um, motion is made, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve of the tran- the appropriate transfer, uh, transfers within department accounts in the sums, uh, stated, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Uh, the next would be, uh, this board tr- uh, transmitting to you, uh, a tr- a request for, uh, trans- uh, tr- uh, transfer from the reserve account in the sum of five thousand dollars, uh, to be transferred to the treasurer, um, the balance in that account is seven, seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. And that, I believe, is for medical and, um, uh, medical and, uh, please retro.
Cause they're re- they're retro pay?
Yes, I, yeah.
So that's to cover that shortage in the medical?
Yeah, right, okay, yeah, okay. Uh.
I'll make a motion to, um, send it forward, it's over to the finance committee.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next transfer to the reserve fund, from the reserve fund, pardon me, is in the sum of, uh, eighty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents from the treasurer, um, department for life insurance. Uh, the premiums came in higher than expected.
Make a motion to, um, send it over to the finance committee?
A motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Second.
Aye. Okay.
Is that all, is that, uh, Charlie?
That, that's it, that's all, that's it.
All right. I'd like to make a motion at, uh, the interdepartmental, we, uh, true badge red.
I just had a question, the retro pay, was the medical expenses for the retro pay?
No, it's from medic, medical, uh, insurance to.
Insurance, yeah.
To the, uh, police department's, uh, for retro pay.
Is that right?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, so that's, that was for the, the interdepartmental.
Intra, intra departmental.
We have a motion on the reserve funds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now support and agree, like, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Next item is, um, uh, item eight.
Actually, Charlie, can I just have the finance committee sign those real quick?
Which ones, uh?
Right, yeah. Yeah. So we can get the paperwork processed. Oh, don't forget the, come start that one. Uh, let's see here. You guys signed the right there, and you don't forget to sign the, um, just, there's no signature line, just sign the right there.
Yes, um. The next, uh, item is going to be the request to set up a special account for the bandstand Ethan Filey. Uh, our Eagle Scout is here, um, he has had the, uh, bandstand, uh, in that, uh, improvements as a Eagle Scout, um, project. And he did fundraising and he has in excess of, uh, one hundred dollars, uh, to be donated to the town for additional work to be done at the bandstand. Um, oh, uh, the town accountant has requested that we, uh, set up a fund to accept the money as there is no fund, uh, presently, uh, for that purpose.
Motion to accept.
Um, second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In, in reference to the spending plan that Kim had recommended, uh, we do already have a project going in down there as part of the capital facilities plan, uh, where we're gonna do significant improvements to the bandstand, including painting, leveling the gazebo surface, uh, pointing, uh, some of the cement blocks and, uh, um, putting a, uh, like a facade that brings the, the gazebo back to its original, uh, condition. So those hundred dollars, you know, thanks to Ethan's efforts and also would like to comment, uh, that he did, he did a great job in terms of the work that he did as an Eagle Scout and I'd like to congratulate him on that and getting his Eagle Scout, so.
Thank you.
Um. Also, um, the, uh, showers department did paint, um, both the town hall and, um, Also, um, the uh showers department did paint um both the town hall and um the library. I would encourage you to try to secure something through the um showers department so um, we could save some money and have them paint the bandstand as well.
Alright, um, look into that. Um, oh, yes.
Good idea.
I have the check for the one hundred dollars you were saying if you want like an hour I can.
Oh. Okay, um.
I can take it if you'd like.
Alright, and um, I would uh.
Save your trip to the town hall.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I didn't even know you were here. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Uh, nope.
So what did you learn from the project?
Oh, well, I learned like
Yeah.
I've learned leadership skills. I uh I I had about like a quarter or fifteen.
Oh, see.
Yeah, there's no six germline.
I just walked here throughout
That's awesome.
the whole project and we did about a hundred forty hours of service towards the project. The uh
Somewhere on one of those lines.
Oh, I found the form that I was missing.
This is supposed to be metal benches that was gone, that were supposed to be going in.
Okay, see I was like, yeah.
Towards like close to the river along the back park and I I just put those in today for coming here, so the project is completely done now.
Charlie.
Thank you.
Did Mr. Joe's um put up his side of the uh the benches? Remember he was gonna match that?
Yes, but but don't say that because we're gonna talk about a weather thing. So, don't, don't go too far. But, uh, yes, Ethan, uh, I had made that commitment and uh.
No, you, oh, was you?
Well, I made the commitment of a weather thing.
Okay.
I had.
Mister Joe's. So, uh, yeah, well.
I was thinking of, I remember you saying that and I was thinking of reaching out to you, but I already had, at the time I already had enough money to, for what I needed, so.
Okay.
Ooh, Charlie's off.
Well, uh, I'll put myself back on the hook, okay. I'll make a contribution.
Thank you so much again.
Yeah.
And I will entertain a motion that we uh send a letter of congratulations to uh Ethan on his uh accomplishments.
Make that motion.
And thank him, thank him for his time. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Alright, thanks a lot.
Aye.
Um, next on the uh agenda is uh remote uh participation in meetings and I'm going to uh pass that over for tonight. Okay, we'll come back to that another time when we have a little bit more time. Alright, um, item number ten is first uh right of refusal for chapter sixty-one um uh certification of forest lands on north of Chipaway Road and uh chapter six sixty-one A land from Cynthia Spencer. The uh sixty-one forest land um certification, are we reaffirming that or?
Nope, this is a new one. I have not yet heard back from the uh conservation plan board or board assessors, so we can skip over this.
Okay. Okay, alright, alright. Uh, but on Cynthia Spencer, have you?
Uh, this is a new one. The the board before was uh the Cushing Settlements. This is a different project.
Okay.
Okay.
Basically, they wanna carve out out of the forty acres of land, five point five acres, and they want to put a solar field in. And they're requesting to take the land out of sixty-one A. The town has the right of first refusal should it so decide, which is one of the reasons why we forward and notice the planning and conservation and other town boards to see if there was an interest in purchasing that land uh under our right of first refusal. Today, we have received no response, so.
And that's actually on uh Dr. Brayley Road, not Chipaway. That was a typo, I'm making apologies.
Oh, oh, no problem. Alright, um, item number eleven, reaffirming vote on police vacation time buyback. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we were, had a request uh because the contract uh was not affirmed until after the date uh and we voted to uh allow this, so we will be reaffirming that.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the um vote on the police vacation time buyback.
Second. Motion made and seconded, seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, minutes from June third and minutes from June ten. Uh, does anyone have any oh, uh, comments on those minutes?
Um, I wasn't there on June third.
Right.
Yeah, motion to accept.
Okay, uh, why don't we do this? Motion to accept on June third.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, alright. Uh, motion was seconded for discussion on uh June third and uh for June ten.
Nope, just June third, not June ten.
Okay, just June, okay, okay.
I have no discussion, just.
Okay, alright.
We needed a second.
Um, alright, second. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Uh, okay, do we note it, uh, June ten?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion made, uh, to approve, I'll second that, uh, necessity, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, police station project update.
Well, you can see the footings going in, you can see um everything taking shape. Um, we're just waiting back on some uh the water quality um things, but I, that, that seems to be working its way out.
Yes, actually, I talked to Kevin today and he had gotten a call, uh, and they are actively uh reviewing the application. Hopefully, that'll be resolved shortly.
Yeah, um, and also, um, we're working on, um, getting, um, I don't, I don't wanna say an amendment, but, um, so we don't have to have the uh full elevator put in right now, so we're looking for
Yes, actually.
um, that as well. So, they needed some additional information. We're moving forward with that. Everything's on schedule, it's clean, it looks good, and, um, we're moving forward.
Why are we amending the elevator?
No, the elevator shaft will go in. Everything's gonna be ready, just like we had proposed. Um, but we want, um, but since the top floor is not gonna be for the public, we don't have to have, we don't have to open that up to the public and we don't have to have the elevator in use right now.
We ha- we did have to secure approval from the architectural barriers board. We submitted information. Uh, they have sent us back a letter requesting additional information on uh what it is that we're doing.
Right.
We expected that as part of uh the process and we discussed it at the team meetings, so.
Right. So, everything's still uh going?
Moving, yeah, move forward.
Right.
Okay, so, just from my own, the well is in?
No.
No?
No.
No, actually, that that would, that's part of.
Okay.
That's what's being held up right now.
We're trying to figure out.
Okay, alright, fine. Alright, uh.
That's the last part that needs to be, um.
Okay.
They're planning on coming out and they're gonna basically uh survey the area where it needs to be so they can mark it off. They uh have contracted, uh contacted, not contracted, we're sorry. Uh, the well driller and they're working to get him in uh to uh to drill the well.
They have to work in concert and we're having problems with one person right now.
Uh, town administration is your board?
Um, the, I just wanted to update the board on a few things. Uh, one is the South Main Street Bridge. Uh, the work will be completed on the bridge on Wednesday. Uh, the br- the bridge work will come in within the amount that we allocated as part of the final change order. Um, in light of the fact that we're gonna be pushing up against the Fourth of July festivities, uh, they are gonna keep uh the barge in the river, but they're gonna move it upstream and the boat that they used, as well as all the related equipment that they used as part of the uh grouting uh underneath the arch bridge, uh, it's gonna be moved to the staging area and will be secured and away from where the festivities are being held. Uh, uh, follow up on the South Main Street Bridge. I did speak to uh Serpad uh about getting placed on the tip list. I actually spoke to a gentleman this afternoon, Paul Mission, and he informed me that uh the entire process is managed through the Department of Transportation, the District Five office, and that I'm gonna, I've got a contact there that I'm gonna follow up with. Uh, the bridge goes through a review process with DOT, uh, is then prioritized and is given to Serpad, back to Serpad, to be placed on the tip list for uh review and uh it ju- basically stays there and they only allocate certain funds for a certain number of projects each year and and at some point it'll rise to the top based on the priority uh that has been given by DOT. Uh, I also spoke to District Five, Shane Souza, about the weight limit standard for the bridge. Uh, the gentleman who does the the uh reviews, Alex Spardo, who's the state bridge manager, was on vacation last few, uh, last week. Uh, Shane said he was gonna talk to Alex this week about it, determine if there is a need for a new loading on uh review on the bridge. Uh, they're gonna review the assumptions that were made concerning the current weight in light of current conditions. Uh, I'm gonna follow up with them. It's a, it's a crazy week only because we have a little bit of holiday in the middle. I'm not sure what the vacation schedule is gonna be for people in Boston, so I'm hoping that by the beginning of next week I'll have some understanding on uh where we are with the rating. They did rate it back in two thousand eight. Uh, he, he said that the rating was high. Uh, but it's, I think the most important thing is that we uh make sure that the weight that's allowed, uh, allows us to use schoo- have school buses, fire trucks, uh, and the ambulances go over and I guess the, it would be, have to be rated somewhere around sixteen ton, about thirty-two thousand pounds in order to do that. I need to still talk to the fire chief to find out the weight of the trucks so that uh, just uh, uh, anything lower than that will will definitely impact public safety and school operation regarding the buses. Um, and uh, we did, we have been getting calls. Uh, in fact, uh, we've got a letter from a woman uh who lives upstreet on North Main Street, uh, who has been concerned about the amount of noise uh that's coming uh up uh North Main Street from the trucks and uh there is a concern there about the heavy trucks going over the bridge as well as the noises being created from the truck. Uh, there's supposedly a restricted road alternative. I haven't been able to find anything about it. Serpad didn't know anything about it. So, I'm gonna continue to follow up on that if there's an interest on the board to uh restrict um uh truck traffic over that road. Uh, the only c- concern is that it's a con- it actually is a constitutional issue and that, uh, you know, vehicles do have a right to travel over the private, over a public way and uh how that would impact uh anything that we propose in terms of an alternative. Um, the final uh report for the uh municipal vulnerability project is complete. A hearing was held by the planning board uh last week and the application has been submitted to the executive office.
What is that?
Sorry, David, what is that?
It's called an MVP. It's a, basically what we did is we took a, a look at all of the potential impacts from climate change as well as other uh potential impacts from the environment and how uh they affect infrastructure as well as operations in the community. And we had a two uh part workshop, two day workshop actually, and out of that, a report came out and I'm gonna fall, I actually thought I had forwarded it to you. I got it today, um, from Chris, uh, which is the final report, and they prioritize certain things that should be addressed. Uh, one of the key things is that uh, um, by getting the designation as a climate change MVP community, it increases our score when we scored for community grant proj- or community grants. So, if we submit a grant, for example, an um a Mass Works grant or another, that's one of the rating criteria and it gives us extra points, as well as identifies certain things in the community that are potential problems that we need to address over time relating to climate change as well as to potential climate impacts uh in the community. Um, I'm gonna be setting up a meeting, a joint meeting at the end of July for the board to meet with the Cushinget Board to discuss the Free Towns screw property. Uh, as you are aware, we did apply for a technical assistance grant for mass development. Uh, those grant awards were supposed to have been made in June. They have not yet been made because I've been following up with them and I'm hoping that I'm gonna have some answer uh on uh the status of that grant, uh, because I think it's a critical piece in terms of us fulfilling our obligations for mass development.
What is, what is the goal for that development?
It's to create affordable housing, senior housing on that project.
How many units do we know?
Uh, well, the, the problem is, is that if we just use the Free Towns piece, it's not commercially viable, so we really need the Cushinget piece. Both boards and town meetings have approved the exchange of the land, so we have, you know, it's just a matter of uh um, acquiring the land from Cushinget either through expanding our town boundary or having us own a piece of land in Cushinget. Uh, if we get the Cushinget land, uh, the proposal was around fifty-five affordable housing units for seniors as well as three thousand square feet of uh commercial space. The only problem I foresee is that uh there uh may be a potential, and I, I'm not speaking to, you know, specifically what it might be, but there may be some additional contamination on the Cushinget piece and whether the town of Free Town wants to take on that responsibility of um uh taking a parcel of land that has potential contamination. The uh original thought was that we were gonna put out a proposal uh that included both parcels, have uh an RFP where the developer would resu- assume responsibility for that parcel and includes it in his uh his pro forma in terms of showing us how if uh we put the two parcels together, how he can make money and the block could be cleaned up. If we can't get uh someone to put together a development proposal, then we probably will have to apply for a great uh Brownfields grant and clean up the Cushinget piece. The bigger question is whether that the town at this point wants to accept the responsibility in another community for a parcel of land that potentially is uh or may be, we're not certain, uh, maybe contaminated.
But that would go towards a forty B.
It's not a forty B, no. It would be, we, we'd put the parcel up through a bidding process, allowing us to, the, ben- basically, we'd say, w- we wanna sell the two parcels together. Uh, the developer would assume the responsibility for cleaning up the parcel, um, and they would buy the parcel from us and then we, we have an obligation to repay uh Mass Development for the costs that they incurred to clean up the Free Town site, which is to demolish the building as well as clean up the property. So, if, if we, we need to uh fulfill our part of the deal and that we said this is what we were gonna do, otherwise the town will be responsible for repayment of the, I believe it was like four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars.
But the, the units for the elderly wouldn't qualify as?
I'm sure they would qualify as supportive housing, absolutely. Yeah, we could do, yeah, we could do that.
Right, okay. Alright, so if they qualify, they would put a dent in our requirements?
Oh, absolutely. We're, I wanna say we're at two percent. There, there are very few communities that I'm aware of in the state that have met that ten percent threshold.
Yeah.
That's a question. Right.
That would, you know, take us out of the forty B realm, you know, where we wouldn't have to entertain forty Bs.
Right, okay.
Um, uh, just the announcement that Governor Baker is gonna be here tomorrow at one thirty uh for the groundbreaking for the South Coast Rail, so.
Uh, Sheila.
With that?
Sheila.
I don't, I, I don't, I don't know if you could talk, I, I was gonna talk to the chair for, for that up.
Uh.
Alright, Charlie, you forgot the constable contract as well.
Yeah, to, uh, to.
Could have, another question for you.
Alright, hi, sorry.
Go ahead. Actually, regarding the sewer project, should we, is, has the econ- the economic development board of Free Town looked at that to give us a report whether?
I did, I did forward it to Bob. He's the chair and uh I did discuss it with him today and uh, um, as I mentioned earlier, if it's something the board is truly and the ta- the taxpayers of the town are truly interested in pursuing it, then I would see them as sort of the driving group to do the background work necessary to bring it before the townspeople to, to, uh, as a project.
Then I would ask that, if, if that's your question, then I would ask that, um, this presentation be given to the economic development board, because how else would they know other than reading through?
Well, I did give it to the chair, I, you know, I know, you know.
Yeah, but you can't ask questions, so, I mean, if, if they want, if they want to, they can do the presentation again.
I had one other question regarding the uh sewer study. Uh, it's gonna cost up to two million dollars and maybe a little more, I'm not really sure, just to do the engineering.
That's inclusive uh uh in the price, but I went and read the document.
Yeah, but that would be the first phase.
Well, yeah, probably, yeah, you'd have to be.
Obviously, that. Uh, should we plan to put that on a fall meeting to see if the voters have an appetite for this?
Um, well, I, I think we want to, I, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves there. Uh, the first thing I think we wanna do is talk as a board, uh, after we've, you know, di- received all the information, Davis kinda do a little bit more, uh, investigative grant wise and so forth. Then we can take the first, my, my first step would be, the potential would be to, uh, look at the, the, uh, Surfhead, uh, forty hours and see if that should be used, uh, for.
Okay, alright. I'll just let it go with that, that's, that's fine.
Okay, um, one item ref- ref- reference to what David mentioned about truck traffic. Um, I saw a little bit about where the, a lot of the trucks apparently are going. I think it may be temporary. I haven't, I, I saw this, uh, Friday. I haven't had a chance to, uh, look into it a little bit better. But I think it, if, it may be just a temporary issue, uh, with workings at a, uh, at, at one of the gravel pits. Um, I know who owns the gravel pit. I was going to get in touch with them and see if they could give us a little bit of, uh, a, uh, rundown of what's going on exactly.
Do you think some of them are trying to get off the, if they're heading s- south?
They're heading, well, they're heading north and south on, on, from, uh, exit ten down North Main Street.
Twenty-fourth South, right? So they're trying to take the earlier exit so they don't have to go to the other one? Is, is that happening too, or no?
Well, well, I, I don't know.
They're coming, they're coming up, 'cause we li- honestly, we hear every day.
Right.
You can't open our windows, I mean, like, when the truck drops.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, so, uh, oh, uh, you know.
It's damaging our health.
I'm sure some of those trucks are itself, uh.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll look and see if there's a sh- a short window of this. I, I believe it is probably a short window.
Okay, alright, thanks Charlie.
On that. And as Tim just said, um, I overlooked, we have the ComStar, uh, agreement for the, uh, company that, um, does the ambulance billing. Uh, it would be a new three-year contract. Uh, it's been recommended by the fire chief, um, and so I would, uh, ask for a motion.
I'll make a ma- a motion to approve, um, due to the, um, recommendation of the fire chief.
Okay, a motion made and seconded. You all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, turn it over to personnel.
Um, so Kim has written us a letter, "As of June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, I am on sick time of a hundred and eighteen hours and a half. I respectfully request that the BOS vote to approve the carryover, um, moving these boards into the next employment cycle. As per our contract, she can accumulate up to two hundred and seventy hours, which is thirty, it's a sick time, what's your pleasure?"
Uh, motion is made to, uh, allow for that.
Do you have a second? You all in favor?
This is, um.
Aye.
Alright.
Um, discuss hiring and interview process.
Oh, okay. I, I asked that to be put on mostly because of, uh, the little issue we had interviewing
Mm-hmm.
for the highway department. And it's my feeling at least that, uh, the interview process should be a little more consistent than this because it changes every year, could have different, uh, chairperson for the, for the committee.
So the way it has been, and I think Charlie, you did, did it this way too, right? How did you do your interview process?
Well.
Did you have the whole board there, or?
Um, I might, I kinda back up on what I think we should do. Um, to, to relieve, um, any, any issues in the, in the, uh, of future. Um, under the, uh, personnel, um, pardon me, under the bylaw, the town administrator, um, section, there is a, um, articulable, uh, plan, shall we say, of how to, uh, carry out, uh, interviews and what, um, the, uh, what the, um, process should be. And there are some, let me just get the right, uh, section here, so I do have it.
Could you please state the section and subsection of the grant, please?
Certainly, certainly. When I find it, Mark, I will talk. It's gonna be Article Three, uh, Section, Subsection three point three, Town Administrator. And it reads, um, funded duties, the, uh, qualifications, let's see. Powers of appointment. And it says, "The town administrator shall recommend candidates to the board of selectmen for appointment to the following town offices: veterans agents, animal inspectors, sealers awaits and measures, and members and employees of the police department." So what it's saying there, my interpretation, is the town administrator can, uh, review applicants for those positions, forwarded to the, um, oh, board of selectmen who are, they are the, uh, appointing authority of those positions. Um, the other, uh, section has to do with, uh, powers of certain elected boards, uh, and offices by statute that has, um, that they have the appointing authority, such as the board of library trustees would be able to appoint a library director. Uh, other positions other than those, the town administrator has the, um, power under the bylaw to, uh, basically make the appointment with, uh, the board of selectmen ratifying the appointment. And reading, um, some, oh, information from the Attorney General's office in relation to this. I think that for purposes of open meeting law, uh, though, abided by the open meeting law in the future, it's best that we allow the town administrator to make those appointments. Uh, there was a Rockland case, I think it was forwarded to you, uh, both about, um, how it was done properly. And there was a Swansea case in relation to the library, uh, board of the library trustees and how they had failed to do it. One of my concerns is, uh, that in a lot of these less important, uh, positions, if you end up with, uh, two or more candidates being ended up, being interviewed, uh, by a board of selectmen in open meeting, it's gonna, uh, lessen the, the, uh, likelihood of getting a candidate who might say, okay, I, I want this new job and I don't want to jeopardize the job I have now. So the, the, the need to have, uh, these, uh, interviews in public, I think is, is limited. So that would be my recommendation there.
Yeah, and I think you alluded to it, but, uh, we did get a letter from the Attorney General's office based on what happened a few weeks back.
Uh-huh.
And that was their recommendation.
Uh.
Well, the recommendation actually is right in front of me and it says, "A composition of a preliminary screening committee would be a board member and any additional staff they believe would be helpful in making the decision, which could be considered the town administrator or whomever would wanna be on this screening committee." And the reason why they say that is the screening committee, just like you had alluded to, that you don't want this in open session. And that's why we didn't have, we can't have more than one board member at that time because then it would have to be an open session. And that's the kinda thing that they're going. And I think what you and I got to at the end of that is that, and you, and I think that a screening committee is a good thing, 'cause you see, we did a screening committee for David. We did a screening committee for, um, some reserve police officers. We've, we've, we've done a screening committee. It's made up of several members, so then that way, um, I think you did one for, one of the firefighters.
Well, uh, uh, the, the one, the screening committee that I, I remember and I have to say, okay, had I been aware that, um, there was open meeting, oh, restrictions, um, in place that I now know of, we would've done it a little bit differently, but the building inspector, um, we, I'll admit, we did it wrong.
How did you, who was on that committee?
Okay, because we had, we had too many, we had, uh, two, two selectmen.
Oh, yeah, see, that has to be in, yeah. Unless you make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, yeah, so. Right, right.
So, and that's what I'm saying. So that's why we only, we've only mostly, unless somebody, unless two or three, or say the board once says, "This is too important of a position. I really wanna have my say in this. I, I wanna be able to meet the candidates and formulate my own opinion," then yes, I think that we should all be involved in it. If we all want to, we're all on the personnel board. I get that. I, I'm not, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. At that point in time, and because this is the wa- it was already advertised beforehand, we went forward with it and what I, what compromise we came up with was, well, I'll forward the top two or three candidates to the board and then we can do, so that's the s- that would be the second interview and then the recommendation would be, because at the end of it, David makes the appointment to us, but then we vote on it.
Just, just to be clear, what the AG's office also wrote. "The board can delegate all hiring to the town administrator and the town administrator picks who will be on the interview panel. A board member cannot be on this panel. These meetings do not have to be posted. The town administrator then recommends a finalist to the board based on the interviews conducted and successful background checks."
Right, so we can still interview the last two or three candidates?
We won't, yeah, but that would be an open session.
Right, um, but I, I think that in all, uh, in all honesty, my opinion is that we as a board restrict ourselves to the positions that are in the bylaw for us to, to act on specifically. Um, and that the others that are not, uh, appointed by another elected body should be left to the town administrator to, to hire. Um, I, I believe that a, a town administrator, I'm not gonna speak for David particularly, I'm gonna say, but town administrator in general is going to then turn to the people who are going to be supervising the employee and have them, uh, approach.
Can, can we ask David to rewrite the process to what you're describing? And then we can look at that and vote on it.
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the town bylaw, so it is written, it's written there. Um, I, I, personally, as a selectman, I would defer to the town administrator to come up with how he's gonna hire an individual. If he's going to, uh, be hiring, we'll say, assistant dispatches. That I, as, if I was the town administrator, I would turn to the police and fire chief and say, "Hire the people you want. You're gonna work with them, they're gonna work with you."
I would go along and talk, yeah.
And then we'll go from there. Uh, so, I think in, m- my interest would be that in the future we go with the concept of, okay, uh, what's written in the town bylaw, we, we go by.
I'm gonna review the bylaw, 'cause I don't, I, I'm listening to, and I haven't read it.
Yeah, right, right, uh, that, that's under- that's understandable.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, and again, the, in the, um, material.
So let me get this straight. No, not, not one person on this board is ever going to interview a candidate for employment in the town of Free Town?
No, no.
'Cause that's what I'm understanding right now.
No, 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 not at all.
Okay, so.
Uh, what, what I am saying is the law, the, the bylaw says that there are certain positions.
So, okay.
So, uh, okay, statutorily, uh, the library, uh, trustees appoint a, uh, library director and any, uh, library employees. And we as, as the, uh, board of selectmen just ratify those that they have, they have abide, the, the library trustees have abided by the law.
Okay, so.
Um, okay, just.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, fire chief, he appoints firefighters statutorily. So we, even now, in the fire department, all we're doing is we're ratifying the appointment that, uh, has statutorily been the power of the fire chief. Uh, and we don't have the authority to say, no, this person isn't.
Okay, so.
So, but the list, some of them, we got statutorily, but two, uh, one of the things that, and I, I'll agree, I think it's important that the elected body appoint police officers because of the, they have such an importance, um, or doing it.
But that is a recommendation of the Chief.
Well, you know, uh, we were.
So you would like to, you would like to interview police officers? You would like to interview a potential police chief at some, if, if that's gonna happen, right?
And, and that's. Yeah, oh, 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 yeah, well, 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 yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, we, 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 by, 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 by law, we hire the chief of police, we hire the fire chief, uh, we hire, um, oh, uh, police officers. Uh, we also hire, uh, for whatever reason, I'm assuming some mass, uh, statute uh, requires that we hire sealer, weights, weights and measures. Okay, so then, what's, what's in it? We have a list in the bylaw that the board is, uh, empowered to appoint themselves and then.
Alright, so, uh.
Can I make a recommendation here? Can we have David look at all the scenarios that we've worked?
Uh.
And then present those to us in the future.
At all?
If you will, can we?
Yeah, that's fine.
No. David, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. Um, since you read that, uh, statute within the bylaw that, uh, that you appointed, uh, appointed positions. Um, listening to that without, I'm going to go very deliberately. Um, that would exempt appointed, in other words, people who are in, um, elected positions, like a highway superintendent, um, who's elected, not appointed, that that statute would not apply to that department. So is it possible that the board needs to review and possibly submit an article to amend the bylaws so the town administrator could oversee all hiring in the town? Or basically, if it's an appointment, because if somebody's elected, they're elected to do, to run the department.
Right, yeah, right, okay, well.
All of the permits you mentioned, with the exception of the library, are not elected.
Everything, everything is not clear yet, but, but, from reading the bylaw, and I don't know the total background why this, the board of selectmen has to appoint a sealer, weights and measures. I'm assuming that there's a statute that specifically says that the, uh, you know, chief administrative officer or board of a town does that. Um, and by statute, the library, board of library trustees, they appoint, uh, the library director.
Because they're elected.
Because they're, well, because they, because they have the statutory authority. It could be, because it could be an, an appointed board of library trustees. Uh, you know, City of Bar River, I'm assuming, does not, well, I know it doesn't elect a board. Uh, so, what, what I'm saying, just to clarify, the bylaw states there are certain positions that the, uh, board of selectmen appoint. Uh, there are certain positions, uh, required by law that, um, the elect, other elected, uh, boards or officials appoint. And then anything else, the town administrator gives the, uh, appointing, or clementary appointing authority. Um, some, some, uh, oh, boards and positions are not under that. It's every position, okay? You have to look at the statute, uh, and then look at it through law. Uh, so that's, that's.
If it's possible, we, the, um, bylaws could be amended or, uh, to, to clarify this, to make it much more of a thinner component.
Yeah, so the reason why we do a panel is to make the process more open. So we're not having that good old boy network back. That's why we do what we, that's why we created a panel. That's why, for, then that way, there are more people involved. And you know what? At the end of the day, most of the time, everybody's on the same page. And that's why we created a panel. So I, I would be interested to see what the town administrator will bring to the table for us to review.
But all, all I'm saying to your response at least, is that under the bylaws of this town, it's a town administrative bylaw was set up over ten, thirteen, fourteen years ago now. Uh, the, the board at that time, uh, set up this bylaw and that the authority to appoint. and that the authority to appoint, uh, those positions, well, was a, such as a clerical position who just, uh, rests with the town administrator. Okay, uh, the, the positions that, uh, uh, the responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen are articulated in the bylaw.
So I'm gonna review the bylaw again, I'm, I'd be interested to see what the town administrator brings to the table. Thank you. So, um, can I, where are we then, are we gonna start the whole, are we not gonna hire a truck driver? Are we gonna start this whole process over again? Um, do you want to interview the three candidates, the top three candidates and bring them forward?
Uh.
Because we have three, we can bring forward for your review.
My, well, my, my personal is that, uh.
'Cause we're down.
Okay, is that we, uh, go by the bylaw, which is the town administrator, uh, makes the decision on who we are, we are going to appoint. So, my opinion, he gives us a name.
So, when, when we left the other day, you said you wanted to interview the top three candidates.
Okay, how, how it comes to that.
Would you like to sit down and interview the top three candidates?
It's true, no.
Okay, so you went there for no reason, okay. We have no truck driver, just the, um. I'm good, I'll wait for the town administrator to bring it forward. I'm fine, I'm not one. All right, so, if you're one, we might want to crank that up a little bit, Chris. So, the selectmen, um, assistant transfer station appointment, Brandon Viveras. I did not, I, I don't know who, um, interviewed him, I don't know anything about him, who is he?
Okay, we did interview him.
Who's he, who's we?
Derek, myself, and Alan.
Okay.
We received two applications, we interviewed one individual, and as a result of that process, we are recommending, or I am recommending, Brandon Viveras for appointment as the assistant transfer station attendant.
Um, I'll make a motion that we appoint Brandon Viveras, uh, effective July second, two thousand nineteen.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Principal Clerk, Pamela Souza, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Judge of second.
Second motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and Nadine, um, Diamond, Principal Clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Judge of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Paul Sadek, Public Records Clerk for the library.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have, um, a resignation, um, from Charles Gray of the C O A, um, effective June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Um, it says June.
Probably just a little.
That's okay.
I'll make that motion, uh, June thirtieth, uh, twenty nineteen.
Right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, do we know if the C O A is going to post the position or something?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Should I ask them if they want us to go ahead and post it or?
Yeah.
See, for the board.
Yes, we should.
We should send a lot of them.
Right, yeah, yes, I would make a motion that we send a letter to, uh, Mr. Gray, uh, thanking him for his service.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, uh, and then I make a motion that we, um, uh, put notification that there's a, uh, opening on the, uh, Council on Agents, uh, on the website.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion, sir.
Yeah, make that a motion.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, uh, reappointments for fiscal year twenty twenty?
For this one, there were a few, uh, the town clerk's brought to my attention that there was a few errors on the list from last time, including a few expiration dates, and then there were a few appointments that were from cemeteries that the board actually does not appoint to, so let's just rescind those and adjust the dates if necessary. And there's also, uh, the appointment for, um, Brad Pyg from Zoning Board Appeals, that is set by statute for three years, so we can't figure one, there's, uh, adjust that meeting as well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, uh, to, um, make all those changes.
Judge of second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and update on annual performance evaluations.
Okay, uh, we have been, uh, allowing, uh, the department heads to interview the staff underneath them. And to date, we have, uh, nineteen, uh, performance reviews completed. Uh, I have the department heads who I am going to perform a performance review, and, uh, that's gonna happen next week. So, that's what we're out with being.
Okay, Charlie out.
All right, um, before we go into executive session, uh, uh, there is, uh, new business. We would not, we are not presently scheduled to, um, next week. Um, seeing that we do have, uh, a number of, uh, different issues that probably, well, could possibly, um, require, uh, some attention next week, uh, I would put out to the board what night they might want to meet. Why I say that is because to, uh, meet on Monday night would be, um, oh, hard to, uh, given gender and post here with the number of, uh, days, uh, so, if we were to meet next week, is there any preference on the, uh?
Next week? Tuesday looks good for me.
Tuesdays would have the same issue as Monday.
Okay, sorry, what?
Uh, Tuesday and Monday would be the same issue with the week.
Uh, sure, oh, okay, how are we?
Yeah, 'cause we'd have to post it by.
Thursday? The eleventh?
There's the, the, uh, the, you know, the, 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 Lisa.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
No, that's a central time, right, statement, uh, to the last meeting, I would have been before that. We briefly discussed earlier time, we talked about four o'clock. With any thoughts on that?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna say, I looked through commu- personally, I don't, personally, I, it would be, I would be favorable to it. But, that being the case, um, I, I looked at other, um, communities, and the only community that meets, uh, earlier than five thirty is Somerset, which does meet at four. I, with that in mind, I think it would be a, um, hardship on the general public that might want to come to the meeting.
General public?
I would make, we do, we do it in the water apartment, nine o'clock in the morning.
At night thirty, we're going.
Yeah, I go there too sometimes.
Okay, I mean, I, I'm just thinking of the general, I mean, and people in general, um, I, I have a concern there, that, so that would be.
I, I've heard it before too, uh, we meet too early, I mean, I wouldn't, uh, four is too early, five thirty, five o'clock is, is fine.
Yeah, bump it up to five.
But, fourth, four o'clock is, is.
Uh-huh, okay, um, while, we, we can bump it up to five and try and see how things are
Five, I don't know.
People are just getting out of work.
And, uh, see if, uh, that causes any problem, but my, my biggest concern is that the public, uh, come.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's legitimate.
Uh, so, well, we can jump for five, uh, for next Thursday, in, in general, um.
It's gonna be here?
Uh, yes, we'll be here. Um, if it comes that we don't need the meeting, uh, we'll be informed, but we'll make it by, uh, we'll, we'll try to make the decision, uh, by, uh, by two.
No, wh- what was this meeting for, did you?
Well, I, I just see, uh, that we're going to want to, uh, potentially have, uh, a meeting to do a number of different, uh, issues that we might want to deal with.
Okay. Okay.
Um, it's not etched in stone, that's what, uh, I'm saying, George, uh, but potentially, I, I wanted to get some feedback, but setting it, okay, if we do next week.
All right.
All right?
Yeah.
With that being said, um, I'll read, uh, the executive, uh, session. Um, we will be going to executive session under Mass General Law Thirty A, Section Twenty One, uh, Paragraph A, Subparagraph Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Public Employees Union Local eleven forty-four Luna Clerical Library, um, Bargaining Unit, because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, and the chair so declares. Um, oh, item number twenty-two, same Mass General Law, uh, Section Twenty One A, Subsection Two, to conduct contract negotiations with the town treasurer, Jessica Thomas. And item number twenty-three, same, uh, chapter and section, sec- same, uh, section, subsection A, uh, oh, pardon me, uh, Paragraph A, Subsection Five, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal charges. The board will not be, uh, reconvening in open session. Do I hear a motion?
Some will.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, Mr. Chico?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Brundwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.